...our concerns and answer any questions of the planning commission. Groups are requested to select a spokesperson to express the group's concern because each side will be allowed ten minutes to speak. Plots, rezoning, revised master plans, and street renaming require public hearing, after which the planning commission will deliberate and render its decision. Planning commission members with a personal or financial interest in any petitioner's request are required to recuse themselves. The members tonight are Ann Clemmons, Frank Cook, Reggie Dunn, Buddy Hardwick, Reginald Hawkins, Cruz Reeves, and myself, James Reed. Members of the land use staff are Mr. Warren Adams and Tanya Ingram. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes.
You told me four, five, and ten will be delayed.
Yes, let me call them out real quick for anybody in the audience. Number four is a plat in Thorington Trace. It's gonna be delayed until further notice. Number five is a rezoning at Taylor Road and Halcyon Park Drive. That's gonna be rezoned until the July twenty-seventh meeting. Number ten, a rezoning on Ray Thorington Road is also delayed until July twenty-seventh. So if you're here for that, you're welcome to stay, but you don't have to.
Are there any changes, additions, subtractions from the minutes of the last meeting? All right, a motion is in order.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and property second for the approval of the minutes of the last meeting. All those in favor? Those opposed? All righty.
All right, item number one, Jeffcoat Engineers requesting final approval of Roy Moore plat number one at the southwest corner of US Highway eighty east and Mosley Road in Ag One District.
I'm Guthrie Jeffcoat of Jeffcoat Engineers and Surveyors at nine twenty-eight South Hull Street, Montgomery. I'm here representing Mr. Roy Moore today on his half acre of land that he's got at southwest corner of Mosley Drive, Mosley Road and US eighty. And he would like to, he's starting the development process by going with the plat and we're under, going also already with the DP that'll be submitted soon. And he wants to have some retail there and most likely used, used car retail lot and his access is gonna be coming off of Mosley 'cause US eighty's a little bit too fast to get through our lot on. So we would respectfully request that you give us a affirmative on this where we can move forward with other facets of development.
Did you say?
I have a question.
Okay.
Is he going to rezone the property? Because right now it's agriculture.
I noticed that.
And on here it says for residential use.
Right.
Oh yeah.
Mr. Moore, are you here?
Regardless, he's gonna have to rezone the property before he can use it for any type of commercial use.
Okay. We'll leave it as residential then and come back with the zoning if necessary.
He, I mean, he can still plat it as is, but he'll have to rezone it for any type of commercial use. And you, and you will see that again.
I've got a question for you, too. Is it, is there sewer out there?
No, sir. This'll be an on-site sewage system.
Oh, no. That small a lot?
Makes it mighty tight, it sure does. That's one of the things we're doing now, is trying to meet the health policy regs. But, you know, gotta have a permit from them.
Is this the, Roy Moore, the old chief justice?
Sir?
Is this Roy Moore, the old chief justice?
No, sir, it's not him.
Okay. So you wanna go ahead with the plat today and, and you'll come back with the zoning? Is that what?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we don't vote on the plat?
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right. Any other, is, is there any questions from members of the audience? Comments, concerns? Yes? Somebody said something?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to meditate and think at the same time. It's hard for an old person.
Have we ever planted before, rezoned before?
Yes.
I don't remember it, but maybe.
It's happened before.
It's happened, okay.
Is, is he connected with that business next door to it?
No, sir. And the reason I know that, they've had to try to do some dealings about land sales and it, so they're not connected.
But he's still gonna want Guthrie to, to plat it today and, 'cause he's gotta do that anyway, no matter what he does.
Right.
Is that where we are?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, okay, okay.
All right. Are there any questions from the members? From the audience? All right, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, a motion has been made and second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number two.
Now, good luck on the rezoning.
Michael Williford requesting final approval of Grady Alfred plat number one on the east side of Narrow Lane Road, approximately fourteen hundred feet south of Bensley Road in a R sixty-five S district.
Is Mrs. Alfred?
Williford.
Are Williford present, either one?
Hello, how y'all doing?
Good.
My name is Grady Alfred and I'm selling two acres.
Your address, please?
The, sir.
Your address, please?
Seven oh oh, seventy-eleven Narrow Lane Road.
Okay. Go ahead, proceed.
And I'm selling two acres, as you can see on the plot, the one on the front, Narrow Lane Road, it's an acre, and Lot B, right behind it, is an acre, and then there's a home place on approximately three-quarters of an acre there, just combining it, and I'm selling it to Buddy Morrison, which is here with me now.
Okay.
There is a easement that's gonna be, just a private easement on the far side, as you see, I think, on the plot up there.
The north side? What's that? The north side? Yeah.
Yes, the north side.
And the long side.
Okay. Are there any questions from the members?
Yeah. What happened to the house that was on that lot?
What happened to it?
Yeah.
I sold it to them. The, the house and the piece of property and that barn, it's all.
Now, there, there's a foundation there, but the house is gone.
Oh, oh, it, oh, that one burnt down yesterday.
Okay.
That one burnt down years ago. It's just a slab there.
Are there any questions from members of the audience? Comments? Were you gonna say something, sir? Okay. No questions, no comments? All right. A motion is in order.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made as second, all those in favor?
Unanimous. It's approved.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Good luck.
Item number three, Flowers and White Engineering requesting final approval of Frank Parsons' plat one on the south side of East South Boulevard, approximately five hundred fifty feet west of Dorchester Drive in O-one and B-three districts.
Hey, my name is Peyton Rude. I'm with Flowers and White Engineering. We're representing Frank Parsons. This is an unplatted piece of property that he wants platted and wants to create two lots with that as well.
Do you know what the plans are for that?
There are no plans at this time. He just wants to platter now, but.
Are there any other questions? Are there any questions or comment from members of the audience?
Where's the second lot, Joe? Am I missing something?
If you look at the north, if you look at the northwest.
Oh, I got you, I got you.
You see it?
Yeah, 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 I got you.
It's like an access.
Yeah. And that, 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 but that's part of the property. It's, it's not just an easement.
It's part of the property.
And so you're gonna need an easement to cross over into this property.
Um, that first lot, one, is just.
It's two on Dorchester.
The access, right?
Oh, okay.
Mr. Buddy, there's, there's existing eas, Mr. Buddy, there's an existing.
Oh, there you are.
There's an existing easement of record, right there.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you, TJ.
Any other questions, comments? All righty.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made as second, all those in favor? Those opposed?
Mr. Hawkins, did you vote for it?
Yes.
Okay, so it's five, two.
Okay.
Got it. Number four has been delayed, number five has been delayed. Number six, Danny Webb of Webb Builders requests to rezone one lot at the northeast corner of Taylor Road in Wittenham Blunt Loop from office to commercial.
Good evening. My name is Harold Hale, and I'm with Webb Builders. I believe they're trying to get the lot up there on the screen for y'all. What we're proposing to do is change a zoning from an O-one to a B-two for a neighborhood coffee shop for the Taylor Road area over there. And wanted to show y'all what we were proposing and see what y'all thought.
What we think of the coffee shop or what we think of the proposal?
Excuse me? Well, that's, that's.
Taste the coffee yet?
Pretty much what we got there is just a neighborhood coffee shop. The current owners have agreed to the layout and the plan and offered, you know, to sell the property, so we're just trying to make sure we got everything covered.
I'm just kidding with you.
All right.
Is there any other questions from the members? Are there any questions from the members of the audience?
What's a, what's a career center?
We'd have to ask Robert Smith.
Ask.
He wants to know what a career center is from the twenty forty plan. Yes.
Is that a training facility or something?
No, that's, that's a term they use in the twenty forty plan, but he's gonna explain it.
Okay.
Robert Smith, City Planning Director. Let me find that agenda item.
Number six.
Yeah, number six.
Yes.
And while he's looking, if y'all look on page six A, that's the career center information from the twenty forty plan.
Yeah, that's, that's actually, so you should have that in your, in your agenda. That gives a really detailed breakdown of what that designation basically stands for.
Oh.
This, this allows for office.
I got you.
As, as the primary, are you good?
Well, no, what you tell me is just read what we got.
Correct.
And I didn't read it. So tell me, give me the short version of it.
Yeah, so the short version is the designation for the future land use plan from the envisioned Montgomery twenty forty comprehensive plan has designated this location as a future land use for career center, which allows for the primary uses of office, civic and institutional, mixed use for the primary uses, and on the secondary uses, commercial, parks, and open space, which the commercial would actually allow for what this proposal is proposing right here, which is a coffee shop, which is commercial.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Are there any other questions? Anyone in the audience? All right, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made as second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right. Thank you. Good luck on your project.
Item number seven, Pilgrine and Bostic Engineering requesting final approval of Lafayette plat number one on the east and west sides of Walker Street, south of Francis Street in M-three district.
Martin Blethyn, I'm with Pilgrine and Bostic Engineering, ten two seventy, Highway eighty east. We're requesting plat approval for two lots on Walker Street for proposed EJI's River Sculpture Garden and a parking lot will be on the north side and a small visitor center.
Did you say a sculpture jo, garden?
A river sculpture garden.
And what is that?
Walkway paths, have sculptures, that's, that's the goal. And then a parking lot on the north side with a small visitor center.
I know they've already started construction out there.
They're clearing dirt, yes.
And we hadn't even voted on it yet.
I'm sorry?
And we haven't even voted on it yet.
Well, we need to plat it because they're gonna have a visitor center, so it needs an address.
Any other questions? Any questions from the members of the audience? All right, a motion is in order.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right.
Pilgrine and Bostic Engineering requesting final approval of Legacy Landing plat one at the north end of Morris Street, approximately three twenty-five north of Maxwell Boulevard in T-four O and T-five zoning districts.
Martin Blethyn, Pilgrine and Bostic Engineering. We're requesting plat approval for Legacy Landing. It's adjacent to the Whitewater Park on Maxwell Boulevard, and they have proposed putting a boat launch existing, down the existing ramp and with a small vending area, restrooms and stuff, and, and parking.
So this is not a part of the Whitewater, it's just adjacent to it?
This is adjacent to it, yes.
Okay. And you got access to, to the river?
Yes.
And that's, the core has already made the.
Yes.
Given you the.
Yeah, we're not doing the civil engineering on it, we're just doing the plating.
Yeah.
Show engineering out of Birmingham's actually doing the development plan. So, yeah, they, they have plans on using, utilizing the existing ramp.
But.
Powder Magazine Park ramp.
Oh, okay. It's, it's there anyway, yes.
Yes.
Existing ramp, is that the one Eugene Street used to go down to?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Are there any questions or comments from members of the audience?
That's a long way from Eugene.
All right, a motion is in order.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion has been made and property second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right. Thanks.
Pilgrine and Bostic Engineering requesting to rezone one parcel of land containing six point eleven acres on the west side of Bell Road, four thousand feet south of Von Road from Ag One to R fifty, single-family residential district.
Good afternoon, I am Chris Bostic with Pilgrine and Bostic Engineering. We came to the previous two planning commission meetings requesting to rezone this property to townhouses. Between the two planning commission meetings and a very long community meeting, it was made clear that that was not what was wanted in the community. So we have come back and rezoned this to be R fifty residential. This is normal, single-family residential housing, fifty-foot minimum lot width. You'll notice across the street, there's PGH forty, so, you know, our lots are even larger than some of the lots in the area. So as far as the density issue that existed before, we have definitely heard what the, the people in the community said and have addressed that. The, I would like to say the, I apologize, I was going to say that the developer could not be here today as of this morning, she was in labor, so, which I think is the best excuse I've ever heard for not showing up to a planning commission meeting. So please keep her and your thoughts and her family. I wanted to mention, since, like I said, there have been two planning commission meetings before and also a, a long community meeting, and there was not time to get a community meeting together before this meeting to clarify the changes that have been made, and I'm sure James Reed can testify that we did try to get one, they're just, it could not come together. I did want to point out some of the comments that were previously made about the density issues and the issues that the community had with it from the last meeting and show that we have addressed them. Some excerpts from the last meeting, comments that were made. Caroline Long from Brighton Estates, an excerpt is, "I think if you want to add it, it should be the same type of housing. It would reduce density and traffic and make Bell Road a better place." She also ended her statement with, "It's not the same kind of housing, it's not consistent with the area, and congestion is, is an issue, but at least changing the type of housing would reduce the density and some of the traffic concerns." And we heard that and changed it. Walter Norris on Bell Road, "You know, we were just against having something that dense. We aren't against development. We would be happy if a church could build there, it would be a good neighborhood fit if an assisted living facility were there, or a residential section that has houses or even garden homes, but not townhouses and not apartments. My kids might one day live where my mother lives, and they don't want townhouses and all the issues that go with it." And we heard that. Felicia Williams, Station Court in Bell Station subdivision, she ended her statement with, "We want less density and single-family homes. It is out of character for the area." And one more, please. Virginia Norris, in her statements, said two things that I think sum it up. "We are opposed to six acres having fifty-two livable townhouses." And she ended with, "I ask you, please, we are not opposed to progress, we are not opposed to small homes, but we are opposed to fifty-two units being sold in this small acre of land coming out in, on one entrance." And we heard that and we have addressed that, and we understand where the feelings came from, and we think with this new submittal for a subdivision, we have addressed all of the issues that, and concerns that we could. Of course, you know, Bell Road is still Bell Road, and there are issues there, but I think our density is a lot more fair to the community and a lot more reasonable request than what we originally did. And we see now what people were saying about the density of townhomes and that, that was a rather unfair ask. So if there are any questions, if anyone like any more information, I, I would like to repeat, I have spoken before the previous meeting and spoke again to Wesley Cox with the city traffic department, and he said that there is a plan in motion for Bell Road to be expanded south of Von to a five-lane roadway, and he can't give a date. He, you know, he doesn't know how quickly they'll be able to make those changes, 'cause no one expected, you know, the school to double in size and for such a large subdivision nearby on Von to be built all at once, but the city is working on it and is a priority, and they're moving forward. Any questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
The, if you remember correctly, the things you mentioned were not the reason that we didn't pass it the last time. The reason we didn't pass it was infrastructure and safety. You never did address that in your, in your list of items there.
Oh, well, we listed the things that we can actually do something about. We cannot get the city to improve Bell Road any faster. I understand what you're saying. Bell Road has problems and, you know, adding the density of houses that we were requesting when we were asking for the townhouses was an unreasonable request, especially with the current condition of Bell Road. But the houses we're asking to be built now, these lots are, I believe, reasonable to, a reasonable request and consistent with the area.
Are there any more, are there any questions from members of the planning commission?
I just, I just wanna make one comment. You know, your thoroughth, thoroughness of going through and doing all that you've done for the last three months is certainly to be complimented.
Thanks, sir.
You did a wonderful job. You, you, you did basically everything that was asked of you, and I know you've talked with the homeowners and, you know, it's, it's not always easy coming in here, but y'all have done a very good job, in my opinion.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question. What you read about the Norrises.
Yes, sir.
Who are the next-door neighbors to this, as best I remember?
Yes, sir.
Did you talk back with them after the last meeting and tell them what you're doing for this meeting? They may be hearing it, I don't, I don't see them.
Uh, well, Mr. Reed can confirm this. We tried.
No, 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 wait a minute.
Huh?
We. You better say what you're gonna say before you say, "I can confirm it now."
Well, if, if I, if I'm incorrect, you can of course say I'm incorrect.
Okay, all right.
But we tried to set up another community building, we, a community meeting. We wanted another community meeting. It could not get put together in time, and I did not contact people personally. We wanted it specifically because the changes we made were so on par with what was requested of us that I wanted people to know that before this meeting, but I can't call the community meeting, I can only request one. It didn't happen. I know that one is planned between the planning commission and the, the city council meeting. That one has been set up, so.
Okay, well, I did not ask about the community meeting, I understand that. I asked, did you contact the Norrises?
Sir, I, I, I don't even know the Norrises.
The answer to your question is no.
Okay. Okay, well you.
My, our attempt was to contact the entire community.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions from members? All right, are there questions from members of the audience? Please be brief as possible.
Rhonda Miles, Bell Station.
Rhonda Miles, Bell Station. Although we have met, I don't think that there's been any solutions. The bottom line is Bell Road is an F minus per two traffic studies by Wesley Cox. And this is gonna create at least three hundred and ten more trips a day, according to Wesley Cox. And they're, they're, the infrastructure's not there. And they're speeding, we have lived on Bell Road for thirty-seven years, our backyard bugs it up to Bell Road and it's, it's not com... We are out in our yard a lot, it's a big lot, and we hear crashes all the time. And people, we see the marks, the tire marks on the, the grass outside our fence line and they've hit tree limbs on our, it, it's, there's too much traffic, too many crotch rockets, speeding all, I mean, our back, our bedroom bats is the back part of our house and I mean, it's all night long, there's drag racing on Bell Road. I appreciate you making less houses, but you know, if you were on a road and you saw a ninety-nine car pileup in front of you, but you always go on that road and that's the way you wanna go, are you gonna be the hundredth car or are you gonna find another street to get to where you're going? And you need to find another street.
Thank you, I'm John Hall, represent Norris Farms. I believe we, it was thirty days ago when you had a similar meeting. And I do appreciate your company or your proposing something smaller. Forgive me, my throat's a little dry, but I thought that particular point is interstructure and I was hoping at the very least, before thirty days came around for us to have this discussion again about the zoning, is we haven't even let the school open or the new business on the corner of Vaughn and Bell. The impacts that we already know were gonna be negative on Bell Road and that certainly that's not your fault. So I'm hoping at this particular time, and I'll continue to come every month if I have to, that you can postpone any rezoning ideas, whether fantastic or not, till maybe January after we see what kind of impact Bell Road's gonna endure once Booker T Washington opens up. Look, I'm all for new homes, I live in, for nearly twenty-eight years in Norris Farms. We do have the smaller homes, very similar to one I assume you're proposing on Roswell Place, you can see it right there across the street on Bell Road. That comes into Nor- Norris Farms. There's probably about twenty-five homes, but we almost have a intersection, I mean, a crash at the intersection every morning, not to mention cars going forty, fifty miles an hour down Bell Road trying to get out as well. So I'm just asking, I'm not trying to knock anybody's plans, is just postpone any rezoning of this particular property until we have real, real tangible stuff and we see what happens when the school opens and the new business. That's all I ask and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. One more.
Hello, Felicia Williams, twenty thirty-two Station Court in the Bell Station subdivision. Hadn't planned to say anything today, but I...
Put the microphone down.
I think I may have heard the gentleman quote me as having last time said something about I was in favor of single, the, single residence, single family residential establishments or something of that nature. I did not intend to say, I do not think I said, nor did I intend to say anything that would state that I, I am in favor of any more traffic on Bell Road. And I echo the reasons that the gentleman from Norris Farms stated, the other new entities that are being developed there, BTW, the car wash, the, I think, four hundred plus houses that are being built on Vaughn, almost a stone's throw away from the intersection of Bell and Vaughn. I do remember, I believe, adamantly stating, speaking on behalf of those of us who will be coming into, headed south on Bell during peak traffic and having to make a left turn into our neighborhoods, those of us at, in Bell Station and Norris Farms for two, having to make a left turn and having to be at the mercy of oncoming traffic coming from the north, which this development would be coming, would be south of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, one, wait, wait, one more, one more. Wait a minute. Go ahead, let this young lady here, and then we'll come back to you.
Thank you, I'm Sandra Sutton, I live in Brighton Estates. And I just would like to say, Bell Road is bad. The infrastructure right now is just bad. My daughter, she lives in Summer Hill and I have to travel that Bell Road every day, sometimes two and three times a day. And I'm praying every time because of the current traffic. And with this new school, the new car wash, I think we should, please, please, wait until we can make some changes to Bell Road, widen it or do something, because right now it's very unsafe in that area. From Brighton Estates to Summer Hill, those curves, that area needs to be changed, something needs to be done by the city before we put more traffic in that area. Please, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Alright.
I would like to make two quick clarifications that I should've said before and I apologize. I, I did not catch the lady's name who spoke a minute ago, but I have the full, the full written out words of everything everyone said. If someone feels I misquoted them, I would be happy to read the entire statement. It was not my intent to try to misquote anyone, I was trying to point out that as far as the density, everyone who addressed the density had said pretty much the same thing, that it was the density that was the issue, they didn't like townhouses and that they would be okay with normal housing. And I quoted directly from it and I have the entire transcript of everyone who spoke. I apologize, I have been told in the past that I have a habit of speaking too bluntly, maybe it's 'cause I'm an engineer, but I don't think I answered your question appropriately. I have not spoken to Mr. Norris, nor have I spoken to any of the people who spoke last time. It was my intent to speak to every last one of them. I wanted a community meeting, I asked for a community meeting, I did not get a community meeting and I wanted to have the same thing we had last time and get to speak to every one of them individually and answer any one of the questions they had, but no, Mr. Norris personally, I did not contact nor any of the other people that I quoted or who spoke at the last meeting, but I wanted to. And we certainly tried to. So I apologize for my too short answer before, I did not mean to sound flippant or make it sound like it was Mr. Norris in particular that I was not trying to contact.
Thank you.
Alright, do you want to take the time to meet with these people again, or do you wanna vote?
We do not have time to wait for it. When we asked for the community meeting this time, we explained that there was not time...
So you're saying you wanna vote?
Yes.
You, you don't wanna meet with them?
We do wanna meet with them, we did wanna meet with them, but we do not have the time to, in the contract, to wait to meet with them.
Okay.
We were not given the option this time.
Alright. Gotcha.
Didn't you say that y'all were gonna have a meeting with them anyway, after, after this?
One has now been scheduled for after this, before the, before the city council hears it. So another community meeting will happen, but we can't put that process, that step back and wait to do the planning commission and then the city council and put it off yet another month. We, we just cannot afford the time.
Because of your contract.
But it, it was not for lack of trying to meet with the public before this meeting.
But you're saying that's because of the contract?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Alright, is there anything else? Alright, a motion is in order.
Guys, this is a tough one.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
A motion been made and second, all those in favor? Those opposed?
Votes four to three, so the motion fails.
Motion fails, alright. Next item?
Hold on just a minute, let me write this down. I'm sorry. Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Stringfield is requesting a text amendment to the zoning ordinance to add data center.
Thank you guys for having us today. My name is Shelby Stringfield, I'm with the Montgomery Chamber of Commerce. My role at Montgomery Chamber of Commerce is to recruit new industries and businesses to Montgomery. One of those industries that we have been looking to recruit, it's become a pretty lucrative investment, is that of data storage centers. For those of you who are familiar with what's considered cloud computing, or otherwise known as the cloud, the data center is basically the backbone of the cloud. These are large, high capital investment projects, they come with very well-paying jobs, they bring with them typically big names, big corporate names and a lot of infrastructure from the perspective of electricity and a high-speed connectivity. We have found that these projects, when they look to site, to locate their next facilities, that they require that designated use be listed in the zoning code for data center. If not, they typically will pass that facility, that, that community along and go to the next location. There is a workaround currently in place that Tanya's department helps us out with all the time. When a, when an industry sector looks to locate it in area, they come and they request a zoning confirmation from, from their department and they provide one, however, essentially their opinion has a caveat at the end, which basically says, "This is for, this is our opinion and it's not legally binding. We recommend you, you seek additional advice on this particular issue." So as you can see, when a company looks to locate in an area and they do get this opinion from zoning, there's always the possibility that down the road, a third party could come in and sue claiming that it wasn't ever an intended use based on the current zoning code. Does that sound right?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
So you want, you, you're basically trying to get the code to catch up with technology?
Basically, yes. You all know the zoning code is, is a couple of years old.
Also, let, let me point out the fact that in the new update that we're working through, data center is in the new update.
Okay.
They just need to go ahead and get it done quicker than our update's gonna get done.
Are we saying that this will apply only to the data centers? Are we saying that this is a, a recommendation to be through any and all?
What, what we're requesting is that we add the term "data center" as a designated or approved, quote, "listed use" under Class A designations. Class A designations could be, are eligible under M one, M two, or M three.
Okay, but let me go, go back on, on, on the same, same idea, okay? You've had a nerve point with me and that is, I, I've been in real estate long enough and seen those letters, that means nothing, okay? It's just, says, "We're not, the, the city of Montgomery's not covering anything."
No offense to Tanya's department, they're great.
Well, it's, she knows this is true.
Yeah, she gets it.
Been around long enough.
Right.
But, you know, if we, it does need to be addressed and, you know, I don't know what the legal side of it is, 'cause we can't ever get any legal opinions around here, but, you know, it just seems to me like that this is, is something that could go in any and all requests for, for zoning. Your knowledge on, I mean, you know, the sheets y'all send out that says, "This is it, but we don't, don't trust us on it?"
Yes.
You know, and we're not liable?
Yeah.
It seems to me like, I, I don't know what liability there is, Robert, you maybe can answer this side of it, but I think it would be good if you're gonna do it, let's clean up the whole thing.
Talking about the whole zoning ordinance?
Yeah, well, clean up the, the, the letters you send out, because I know there's a lot of people...
Okay, you're talking about the zoning verification laws?
Yes.
Alright, I, I, that's a separate issue, but I got what you're saying.
Yeah. And, and I have, I have one, I have one specific point that, that Mr. Reed just mentioned. This particular type of sector, data center, is a prime example, is a very, very new use and it's really not on the books in very many communities at all.
Right.
You know, you could have something out there like a distillery, for example, you know, distillery may not be on a listed use in a community, however, distillery's been around a long time, we know what they are, so to say that our nineteen seventy-five is... that even if her letter meant something different, that you can't tell me in nineteen seventy-five, when you guys voted to approve this zoning ordinance, that you ever, ever contemplated a data center would be there. And a third party could take that concept to the court system.
Well, nineteen seventy-five, I was thinking about a lot of other things.
That's right, that's right, yes. So this particular example, like Mr. Reed said, is prime example of...